To the January 3rd, 2023 City Council meeting here at City Hall. Happy New Year. Welcome to a new year. When we didn't make it to 23 and here we are. So thank you for that. Before we move to, well, I actually want to get in trouble. With the first confirmed the role. Wish to be sure that you were able to give. Comment. You always to have submitted that beforehand in writing. And or. Be here in chambers to deliver. Just wanted to share that reminder with. With that. Excellent, please. Very much. Council, first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Could I have a motion? Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. It is unanimous. Citizens comments at this time. You would like to speak council on an item not on the agenda this evening. Do so. You'll have a few minutes, starting with your name and address for the record. Ask first for those here in city chambers to come forward one at a time to the podium and then we'll move online. See someone standing up with name and address for the record and.
Apologize for not having was in writing. I little accident this weekend of commission. Um, two things very quickly. First one is. I've been to council meetings, one with this council and this mayor a few months ago. One with the former regime and it suggested that we get together with sister cities, Snoqualmie and. Honor our first support, our first responders, the recent fire. I seem like everybody always nods and says it's a good idea. And I don't think anything, my knowledge, nothing's happened in that regard and I really wish. You all would take it up and at least give it a, give it yes or no. I think they need our support. I see they're under attack again today in Olympia. We saw. So they do it. They do a heck of a job for us, I think. All my years here, I've only had one run in with them where I didn't think they behaved appropriately, but I think they're a pretty darn good group. They're humans. They make mistakes. Mostly they're right on. They're there protecting your businesses and all of us and our kids. That's item one. Item two, you won't like what I have to say here, but it's it's important. I think the city does a bad job outlining where you can and can't. There's two, you allow vehicles too close to corners. And I don't know, you probably have some code you're following and maybe you say Snoqualmie, is it this way or Isitqua or Bellevue? But I don't care. Here about what we do here and how we do it. And it's not done safely in many cases. And again, because I've been down with a. Accident I had, I don't have an inventory for you here tonight. Let me give you one good example and you can look at it. You can see for yourself and I think any fair minded person would find it dangerous. That's at the corner off of. I think by Bartels going west on, on South left Park Street. And we've got the. The businesses there, a tight little entry or exit from Bartels. Now we've put in another lane there. We've allowed parking right up to that corner that comes out of Bartels. And it's not safe and will regularly have a big vehicle parked there. The left and you can't see to get out. And you have to find it because you have to be past that bar to see what's coming down the pipe. And they're coming and now that you got another lane of traffic there for the left hand lane, it's very dangerous. So. That's one example. There are a number around, around the city. And keep in mind where you have that little paint that you're not supposed to be into. People fudge on that. Keep that in mind. It's not safe. A lot of the parking you have in here is not safe. Thank you very much.
Now, I was here in chamber.
New Year, Your Honor and Council. First, Happy New Year and thank you for the job you guys are doing. And also thank to, and also thank.
You need to just start.
I'm sorry. I'm just sorry. I'm Paul Malish. I'm at 355 Southeast 10th Street. We're in New Side View. I have a question. I have a, it's a strong recommendation, I guess. I want to thank Mark. I owe him a return call. He did return my call when I asked. What is the, what is our policy here in North Bend for cleaning and treating the roads? Just thinking of this past ice storm, which I know was fairly dramatic. Reason I'm here at the city council here is because he had an accident. My wife slipped and broken a rib. So now she's out of work and out of commission. My understanding is that North Bend does things a little bit differently than other cities and that's been kind of repeated from folks I've talked to in town. As I talk to the pharmacist at UFC or I'm at Bartels or some other places where people come in from out of town, they've noted that. Less than stellar clearing of the roads. I don't know what the policy is. As I said, I've had some time off and I owed Mark a return phone call. I called him and asked specifically what it was. But I'm going to say in the case, the infrequent cases which we had recently. That we need to do a better job there because now it's, now, now we have hurt people. And damaged property. And all of this, I think, could be prevented. So that is. I do, I would do like to have an answer, answer to my question at some point. Doesn't have to be here, but. Yeah, later.
I'm sure he'll get. Do we have anyone online?
No one online.
We will move on to announcements, presentations and appointments. Item number nine is AB 23-006. Twenty twenty-three council standing committee appointment. Mayor Proton.
AB dash zero zero six.
Second.
Motion in a second. Anything that needs to be said to this?
I tried to give numbers or requests. Got the honor of filling in. Mr. Rosen, I hope.
That we won't ask Mr. Rosen to comment. Is there any other council member to say anything?
I for, I for one applaud your enthusiasm for buying Mr. Rosen to. Near hard shoes as key chair and I'm sure he will do a fine job. We're deserving with him once again. And all getting aside, I thought you did a great.
You are aware that I'll be on public.
Yes, you will. Yes. I've been regretting it for 20 years.
I did. I don't know if this was the time to ask committee for change meeting date.
That's your discretion to whether, but we do have a motion on the table that I think you want to dispense with and maybe you want to take.
Ask question. Are you trying to change committee meetings?
Dates. So finance.
Yeah, I think that's usually done at the committee level where they request it. And I've got one that we will be requesting. That's typically done at the committee level and.
With that, motion before you is to approve AB 23 dash zero zero six confirming the 2023 appointments to the city council standing committees. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Actually, we have a presentation, right? So Lisa, by our new administrative services director. Tell us a little bit about the citizens academy that's starting in.
At the microphone 101. So I'm. I'm really happy to share some information with you about the citizens that me I've been working with three. And I want to give a lot of credit to three and the. He's done this situation. This was a vision that started a long time ago and ran into COVID. Better. So now it's back and we have some, some great things happening with citizens. So I'll start with the purpose. So the purpose really is to increase community engagement and also increase civic knowledge among. North Bend and for opportunities for them to learn about government, about city operations. Services, meet the leaders and the staff of the city, understand where their tech. And so, and to learn how to get involved in government. Open to anyone 16 years. And we're excited about that because part of what we've done is create a partnership with Mount High School in helping prepare for the citizens academy, which I'll. So some details for you to be aware of in case people are asking about it. It's a seven week course. It's free. It'll be on Monday night from six, seven thirty. The exception is the homemade police department is offering a full day, eight to two at the police station. And has lots of fun, interactive these and we will be serving food. All these activities, I imagine is. And the sessions are planned to be interactive. There'll be a tour of. There'll be an optional tour to do the, to see the waste. Which will be on another day because we want to do that during the day and not. There'll be video interviews with our commission, people on our commission. Mission chairs, ones that are doing it, legal counsel. And we even have someone from the historical entity that will. Some history of North. The kickoff is on February 6th. That will be with Mayor Robb and our city administrator. Representative Christie from the historic side and they'll be talking about the three of North Bend and an O of operations. Other sessions will feature our city clerk. Our legal or law and the city government on public information. We have finance, Richard. We have our fired, Eastside Fire Department are gonna. Night. We have. Works, CED, all our esteemed directors, leading their staff. It is by application. We have nine or no 11. We're at 11 today and we are capping it. Very enthusiastic. And we are inviting you. You are more than welcome to attend any, all, one, two. But we would like you to join us on March 24th. Evening of our council meeting. There'll be refreshments and allowing the. Meet you in person and and at meeting though. I want to thank her for bringing her notebook that she got. Help me just to give us some ideas and see what they've done and her t-shirt. So we will be building on this. This is the first one. We're very excited about it. I'm sure it's. Know that there are four. Yeah, on January 17th.
Any questions?
So excited. I went to the city academy and I learned much about cities and it made me want. Because you don't even think about it as. Anybody that. Me is learn a lot.
And that was one thing that we're excited about with partnering with Joe Doc, raise media. They're the ones that are going to be in the. Presentations that will present in this. That information was shared with them, with citizens that I've made to share with students. We're hoping to increase the interest and enthusiasm. Young people.
Anyone else?
I'll just add briefly, I'm very excited as well. This is a very great start in the year and have great hopes. So I'll, I'll be there for as much, as much as I possibly can. Thank you for all the hard work.
Want to say thanks. I think this is a fantastic idea. Great way to engage the public. We do here and what everyone here at City Hall does on a daily basis. The more they know, the more they understand. And I appreciate the efforts.
Well, it's, thank you very much for that overview. You know, I'm thrilled that this is something I wanted to see us do since getting into office. We had set X. Stuff talking about. So it's going to be. She was enthusiasm. With that, we will move on to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives.
Yeah, I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy new year. Also, I understand there are concerns, a lot of concerns raised. Removable and how we. We should get more out to the citizens and as a county, we should. And I also want to thank the works. They work really. Was an unprecedented event. Remember, here was years ever experiencing a ice storm. So that was kind of. And to say the least, stepping out of your driveway or your steps, it was not safe. So. Wouldn't be their citizen, their own, you know, areas of their house got. Overall, I think half really hard. There were some. Things added that I think there were some areas that I think we, some, because we made some changes the last. And I think it's always important. I've gotten everybody be safe out.
Thank you. And Alan, that's wonderful how you mentioned that. I want to thank our public works for all the efforts, all the city staff. Prevailed during that last storm that we had, which was exceptionally difficult. I went down as like works a couple of times to deliver little treats to talk to the guys that would happen to be there. And that was really informative to me. I really feel that we need their support. Also, the factor of educating myself and everybody else in the community, super, super important. So. That was a very slick and arduous a couple of days there. I was wearing cleats around town. And other people in Snoqualmie were evidently ice skating uncertain the road. So we. It hit us hard here. It hit us hard everywhere. So do better, I know, but. You know, these, these odd events, may they occur again. We don't know for sure, but we can always do a little bit better and learn from everything we have. Same time support each other in a way. Also for that, I just wanted to add a couple more things. Beyond my happy new year to everybody. I hope that we can be there for one another as fellow members of humanity. A sense of the word. These, these words I say, I seriously, and I want to express to the whole community that we need to take better care of each other and not so. Of attacking each other verbally. Either it's on social media, confrontationally in general, yet that means thriving recklessly. I've seen that. And treating each other, we can certainly do better. And I want to stand by my words and do the same.
Yes, Happy New Year all. Just reaffirm Mary's. Words of seeking to do better. My own, it's been a long couple, three years and it's the end of a new year and the beginning of a new one. And everyone is a little. Born thin. Hey, haven't gotten through the holidays and it was a quiet one for us, but I'm thankful and have so much to be thankful for. Certainly want to take Mary's words to heart and continue to work for it. Bettering our community, during our planet to the degree that we're able. These challenging times, the best way we can do that is to support each other. As also member Miller, just so. We hated. Yeah, I don't know. Need to go on about storms. I do want to acknowledge the, the hardworking city staff showed up 24/7. The first event. I thought town never looked better. The strategic application of salt at 16 locations throughout. It benefits, especially in that first more normal storm, the ice storm that came through here is. Was something to behold. There are forces greater than us and mother nature is one of them. One, I did have the pleasure of coming to the holiday party here at City Hall and. That was a wonderful event. The health and wellness committee that I think has been benefits for staff. It was lucky to be a participant along with some member Colin. Aaron Mitchell was named employee of the year, rightly so. I think that's really of acknowledging. And right, I'm looking forward to the council retreat. Yep, we're going to put our caps on and. Spend some time together focusing on a strategic vision and revisiting the one that I mean, I'm not suggesting there isn't a strategic vision, but we will be. Minding ourselves of it. And I acknowledge Lisa's work on that. Great undertaking for the city. Here we go. Thanks.
Mr. Ronberg.
Just Happy New Year to everybody. I'm glad we made it through the storms. I hope the holiday seasons were great for you and your families. And we look forward to getting started on a new year with renewed enthusiasm. And you know, let Mr. Rosen wrap it up and he'll probably mess it up.
I'm sorry. As a quick reminder, everyone, we have council member Elwood who is participating virtually as well.
Thank you. Rosen, we'll go to you and then Mr. Elwood.
Happy New Year, everyone. I want to. Some compliments to what I got to watch after the ice storm in my moment over in New Side View. Sure is repeated elsewhere throughout the city. I was privileged enough to watch, I think, our community come together in ways that I hadn't seen in quite some. That ice storm, there were limbs and trees down everywhere. And our neighbors, when they bumped in, went out, just proceeded to. One door to door, hoping others didn't have either the equipment. Maybe they didn't have the health to go out, remove these trees. So. We followed that up with securing a chipper. And going around door to door, picking up all the debris from the neighborhood, shipping all of that. This is what community is all about. This is what makes North unique. It is that I want to live. And it is easy to focus on some of the negativity and I, we all have. Watching that was, it was an impressive event. It's made me proud to live here. I really want to thank my neighbors for doing what they did. It's just incredible. For all of that. Name them all. Way too many of them out there that want to show my appreciation. And just add that one of the people that did that, one who was sitting. I do agree that everybody should get. Truly Jonathan showed the way to by stepping up and being terrific. I joined one of the events. It was a shredder event. He was out there in the rain and everything else along with. He's exactly right. This is exactly what made.
Was going to be my comment. He was, I saw him that day and he was dripping wet. Obviously was doing some. Appreciate that. Mr. Elwood.
Thank you. I appreciate listening to this and, and I'm going to have to give all my colleagues sitting at the tables a hard time for not speaking into the microphone. We need to follow Mary Miller's leadership on this because she speaks directly in the mic. I can hear every word she has. So. It's sad that I'm not there in person with you, but I'm recovering from illness. But it also gives me the benefit to remind everybody the microphone is critical. So that's, that's, that's thing one. Thing two is we were out of town for the holiday. We missed all the weather. I don't know if that was good or bad, but I appreciate the feedback, the positive feedback that I was hearing from folks. I appreciated the updates from Mark Regos on, hey, here's the status keeping us in tune, even though I wasn't there. So even though I was removed, I didn't feel I was completely out of pocket for everything that was happening. So I appreciate how the city responded. Staff and leadership and, and all that went down. I'd also like to. I guess make a, a new year's. Not resolution, but a re-promising, if you will. I'd like to intensify our focus this next year on increasing public engagement and awareness with our processes. Important initiatives and policy development. When I ran for council the first time, one of my promises was to increase engagement and transparency. And I think we achieved that goal as we created a communications director role. We increased outreach. I think we had a record number of town halls prior to COVID. That said, I think we can do more as I believe it's our responsibility to raise the bar once one is established. The community and all its nooks and crannies must be front and center to our decision-making process always. I think we all agree with that. As such, I will strive to do more this next year to bring our community into the front of all that we do. And I ask that my colleagues. The administration and staff do the same. They are why we are here and we need to make sure to honor that. And I'm putting that commitment out there because I think we can do more than what we've done. But I think what we've done and what we've achieved is pretty great for community the size of North Bend thus far. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you. Your Honor for the time and we'll talk very soon.
New mayor.
It's for you, Brendan. I'm talking right into the microphone. I would just like to thank all of our first responders, police, firefighters, public works that were out in the middle of the night. And icy conditions, doing the best they could with what they had available. And I know they tried their hardest. I hope everybody was safe. I know we are continuing to try to improve. Think one thing we thought about, not used to it, is maybe the sidewalks. We were so focused on the roads. I think we continue to strive to improve and I want to thank everybody and wish everybody Happy New Year.
Miller, anything for the administration?
I'm going to join everybody in thanking public works. There were more than 200 trees down. Mark tells me more than a thousand limbs. It took at least two guys to lift. Pick up. They're still cleaning up. They're chipping tons. He's working on a recycling event. Take all of the chippings and things that people can't dispose of.
Take all of the chippings and things that people can't dispose of and have a recycling effort very soon. So that people have someplace to put all of that stuff that fell out of the sky. And I think they did a tremendous job and continue to do so. And we're gonna have times like this where we have to do just what council member, uh, Rosen said and. Stick together and do what we can. I noticed people out on my road. Out in the middle of all of that, cleaning up some mess that somebody had dumped of roofing material. So to see people in your own neighborhood going out, please it up like that, pretty amazing, but it's pretty typical here and I'm proud to. Live here and be a citizen. So thank you, Mark, you and your crew for that.
Obviously. You know, my, my feelings, I appreciate what. Expressing here, I admit, some member Jocelyn and I have. Yet. Who, uh, at the same time. So in addition, seeing them in action and knowing, we also got an opportunity to get a little educated about. Um, some of the equipment, learning a little bit more about what blades are, this blade versus that blade and what the guy that's actually driving the machine thinks. And, and how it, how it worked. So that was, that was good. So. And yeah, we couldn't say enough about it. It's just precedent. It is, as I've said. Here several years longer, but the same experience. I, I remember maybe some ice on trees, nothing like. Nothing with the winds that we got. It was just, it was absolutely incredible. Yes, continue to look at opportunities for improvement as I believe we always do. So thank you all for that. A few other things I, I, I want to get out first of you of the more typical announcements. One is that city. And, uh, particularly the North Bend Parks Commission invites citizens to attend two upcoming meetings to provide input. Design projects for the William H. Taylor Park and Riverfront. These meetings will be held on Monday, January ninth, one to four P M, North and Train Deep. And then again, on Wednesday, January eleventh, from five thirty to eight thirty here at City Hall. Your standing is the format is going to be the same for both, that both, both events will be identical. You don't need to go to both. One or the other, or you can certainly attend both. Certainly get your input in there. I think that does again speak to what Mr. Elwood was. About moments ago and the idea of. Opportunities for engaging with. Yeah. Uh, one on roadways and update the roundabout at southeast one thirty-sixth street. Four hundred and thirty-sixth new air. Chinook over. Instruction project scheduled to. Reengage this month. Uh, it's been waiting for a while for the overhead. Uh, utilities to get undergrounded and that's supposed to start here very shortly. That will run through February, followed by grading curb sidewalks and street paving. Should be wrapped sometime this. Pretty excited that that's finally back, back. That we've, yes, the engine meandered. Well, other things, I'm, 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 uh. Please. And I don't know if, um. I know I'm not the only one in the room because I know several, uh, uh, staff members know, but also may not be aware. Of the, um. Celebrities in the room with us today. So. Valley Record annually does a best of the valley. On test, so to speak, where they ask throughout their leadership area, who are the best of strands? Gas stations, you name it. One of those is about the best of city government. Guess who is considered the best council member? Ms. Miller.
Apologies for turning red, but trying to stay humble.
So that's pretty awesome that she was not only amongst just North Bend, but throughout the valley that she was recognized for her service. And so I, I had to call attention to that. And I had to call attention to that first before I went on to say, guess what city has the most awesome staff? Of all of the valley cities? So that we not only did we have two honorable mentions. In best staff person and I'm mayor from our front desk coordinator, permit coordinator. And Art Kelly, his work in public works, both recognized by the community for their engagement. Ree Kevren was seen as the top. Person best of the valley for all staff members. So not only did we get recognized, but we swept category guys. And North Bend has the best staff or none. Have to pump on that. Um. Speaking of. How hard your staff works in all respects, we have to also mention that council. Hold on to your seats as you're beginning to see through the information we're feeding you. We've got a lot. Coming at us this year. It's gonna be a jam packed January, lots of meetings, lots of good things as we reengage. Thankful that everybody's ready to go on that. Whole year, I think, is going to develop. Out of large, uh, contracts in front of us, starting with base management. Understation, there are others coming in. So we're gonna have a heck of a year, even beyond. On the ma- amazing things we do in that. Ready for that. Uh, council also remind that we will be holding a special council work study this next Tuesday, January tenth, City Hall at seven P M. First of those work studies for this year and many more to come. Um, with that, we will be entering executive session. Discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one oh. And hey. And collective bargaining, so it to R C W forty-two dot thirty. One forty-four.
Oh, wait, adjourned to that. I got one question that just in mind I thought about it. There are some areas with. These that sit on the edge of their property that maybe are the city. There are a number that they should be reaching to. Now, whether it's their responsibility to rid of them down because I, I have seen a couple look like. Nature. Not just whether we got some. Put in the recording that they should get a hold of people that.
Mark, I'm assuming you'd like.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's a tree that's on private property, then it would be a owner's responsibility if it's a tree in public right of way. I'm an area, then it's city's responsibility. So we need us just in a certain intersection, we can start. It's a tree limb that's within ten feet of a power line. We legally. So we have. Down energy or their. Reasons or sort of.
Is there any nuance to those communities that have? Just the city. Still basically that. It's.
If it's a private tree, we're not gonna.
An HOA where they're carrying these through a landscape contract, there's damage, we're still big for that.
It just really depends on where the trees look.
Tree a butt to a park. You can't tell, I can't tell whether I have one tree that I'm thinking. I've had questions asked by other people similar. So. The biggest information that I wanted to get was who to contact, if there's a concern, if somebody.
And sometimes I think what we need to acknowledge is, is it may be clear in our head what's right away and what's a lot. Sometimes. Individuals don't know really where that. So it is, I think, individual. I would, would assume you'd say tech. Specific.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at it.
Any more interruptions? Mr. God Health, I think that was three for you tonight.
I'm sorry. I just didn't know where to bring those in.
It's okay. I'm gonna back up. And, and make my comment again about the executive session. As, as said, I, we will be going into executive session hopefully now. Discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two dot three dot one ten. On I and collective bargaining pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty-one forty. Expect to be in session about sixty minutes. There will be no action following executive session. Therefore. With that, the recording of the meeting will now cease.